Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 27th City Council Meeting. Please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we continue, those of you that wish to video this City Council meeting, please come up and state your name and address for the council.
Michael Spock, 1B Street. I'll be using my phone.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else?
Wayne Rose, 19 Thundike Street.
Thank you. Okay. That being said, the only other thing I'd like to mention in terms of, if anybody wishes to speak, we're not gonna speak without coming up to the podium. Everybody is willing to give their opinions, but we have no outbursts. So this is a warning that if there are outbursts, you will be asked to be escorted out by one of the officers. So I ask that you just act professionally and with respect. That being said, let's move on to roll call.
Roll call of the members, Counselor Cagliandro.
Here.
Here, Counselor Keith.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselski.
Here.
Here, Counselor Rizzo is absent. Counselor Rotundo.
Present.
Here, Counselor Serino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, and Counselor President Fiscondi.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of June 16th.
Somu.
Calendar item number three, hearing called is ordered on an ordinance further amending the zoning ordinances of the city of Revere relative to research and development facilities.
Before we go on to proponents, opponents, and having the City Council speak, what we have, we have a guest here from Mr. Sam Lipson, I believe, who is the current Director of Environmental Health at Cambridge Public Health Department. I believe he is helped and responsible for writing some of the ordinances in the city of Cambridge and wanted to come up and really just speak to the City Council and give us maybe a short, brief educational information on the bio levels. Floor is yours. Name and address, if anybody's, for the record.
Yeah, my name is Sam Lipson.
Thank you.
And my address is 131 Newburgh in Roselandale. So, yeah, no, I thought I'd offer a very general, very quick history of how we ended up in Cambridge with a lot of biotechs, a description of where the sector is right now from what we see, and maybe a couple of other points as they come up. But I know this is a new topic for Revere, so, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot to pick up just in terms of the technical side of it. But in Cambridge, they actually began, it was the first place in the, in the world, actually, where they began to push back on whether or not it was safe to work with recombinant DNA, to make changes to the genome of an organism, and then, you know, work with the changes, the changed organism or the changed cell. That all happened in the early 70s, and Cambridge had a period of about two years where there were a lot of debates in City Council, very much like this, back and forth. And there's some stuff online you can look at. And the, in the end, because it was the uncertainty at that time that was really driving the anxiety, and to be fair, at that time, there wasn't a lot known about some of the biological mechanisms underlying the sort of genetic changes that they were talking about making. So in the beginning, the city decided eventually to allow this work to go on, but to have each project reviewed carefully by people who were really qualified. In other words, people who were in biological sciences. That went on for about four years, and, can't hear? Okay. That went on for about four years, from 1976 to 1980, where each experiment was reviewed independently. Then in 1980, Cambridge came up with an ordinance that looked, it's a fairly simple ordinance that requires that anybody doing this work in the city has to comply with the NIH guidelines, which are still in place. They get updated frequently. And it was a pretty simple approach, trying to turn what had been a project-by-project review committee, basically, into a regular permit program that gave the operators a right to operate. Now, the biggest changes that have occurred since the early 80s are that the biotech sector has, first of all, grown much bigger, but also, very importantly, the nature of the work, the potential risks are much, much better understood than they were in the 70s. Because of all the work that's gone on, they've learned a lot about, indescribably more, really, about the internal mechanisms of cells and what happens if you introduce genetic material and whatnot. Also, very importantly, in that sector, where they were working with pathogens and organisms that were potentially capable of infecting people in the very beginning, what they found through using the technology was that they don't need a viable organism to do that kind of research. They can take a part of the organism that can't reproduce, or a version of it that can't replicate, as they say, therefore it can't infect. And I would say almost 100% of the work going on in Cambridge, and we have a lot of stuff going on, we have 175 permits, and MIT's one permit and Harvard is one permit, so you can imagine the scale. Almost nothing that's being done right now involves anything that's capable of causing an infection, right? In other words, the subject of the research is not able to reproduce. Outside the body, inside the body, doesn't matter. It's engineered so that, it's essentially a mock-up of the thing you want to be studying, but it doesn't have the ability to infect anyone. This has shifted the risk profile of that work very, very much towards safety. And it's been my experience that the industry itself, the sector, even when they weren't required to, like if they come to Cambridge, they're required to do a bunch of things, or Boston. But the sector overall adopted these fairly precautionary standards for work in the laboratory, for internal review of all the work by people who are going to be working in the lab. So I think it's fair to say as a sector, it gets a lot of glamour because there are some pretty high-profile, you know, pharmaceuticals that are emerging, the whole vaccine thing, of course. But the fact is, it's pretty boring from a risk point of view. The much more kind of challenging work goes on generally at university labs, at government labs, at labs like the Needle in Boston, which is a BL4 lab. These are very special facilities. They're not really a big part of the biotech sector, not part of the private sector by and large. So the very 10,000-foot picture here is that what we have almost entirely now in Cambridge is companies doing work where the greatest risk is probably a blood-borne pathogen risk. In other words, it's similar to the kind of risk you would face handling any blood or blood product in a clinical setting, because, again, the underlying pathogens they're working on aren't infectious. So that's, that's what, it's less interesting, I guess, than it used to be, but I'm happy about that.
Great. Well, what I'd like to do, and thank you for that.
Sure.
What I'd like to do before we have the counselors ask questions, I like to reserve that. We'll start off with proponents and then opponents, and then we'll move on to the City Council. And they may have some questions for you, so if you don't mind just hanging around for a little bit.
There is one other point I wanted to make about animal research, which in Cambridge is regulated separately. There's an ordinance for animal research, and then for biosafety, which is all microbiology, right? So in that case, I don't have to worry about oversight of the animal research, but I will say that unlike biosafety, which is really what I'm responsible for, animal research is regulated by the federal government in a number of ways. It doesn't mean that they have boots on the ground and come in and inspect every lab, but they have requirements for the conduct of research with animals that are much stronger and are actually required. They're parts of federal regs. So I just thought I'd make that distinction.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. What I'd like to start off with, this is being, this being a public hearing, we'll start off with any other, or any proponents to this. Now, this ordinance change is strictly lowering the level to a level, from a level three to a level two. That's the ordinance change that's on the, on the agenda. So nothing else. That being said, any proponents, any other proponents, or any proponents. Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. Any opponents? Name and address. Push the button.
If that helps. Laurie Stathopoulos, 125 Essex Street, Salem, Mass. This is Dolly. And she's my service dog. Now, I'm not here to yell or scream. I'm here to ask everyone to consider being more spiritual and do no testing. I'm just asking. I'm not opposing. I want you to look at this animal and just think about what we're doing. Just think about being kind. And with that, I just want you guys to see for her. And I know you have dogs, but seeing is believing. And I'm asking that, you know, I really appreciate you guys going from a three to a two, but it still allows animals. So if these just could put in no testing, I think everybody would be so happy. And thank you for hearing me tonight.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Michael Spock, 1B Street. You know, I care about all the safety, but I just read in the paper the other day that the residents of Natick can't open their windows. And it got to that point where it's a hazzard to them. And when they approached the city, the city said, "Well, we're not responsible. You just can't open your windows now." And that concerns me. I don't think a bio lab should be here at all. I think there are plenty more other uses for this city that could be used there. I've never seen any hearings or anything to the public about approving this bio lab. There was never any public hearings for this. You guys admitted it a month ago. "Oh, we're in the beginning stages." Two days later, you're breaking ground. I have no more to say.
Thank you.
Hi there.
Hi.
My name is...
Name and address.
Sure. My name is Lisa Trunfaglia, and I'm now living in Salem. I've been a resident of Revere for many years. My concern here is that we, the people, better really take this serious because a bio lab, where it's gonna be, of its ups and downs, is where my grandchildren are gonna be, where the people that I love are gonna be. It's a place that there's gonna be restaurants, shopping, and to have a bio lab there, I find that horrific. Why would we ever put a bio lab in an area where there's all us shopping and eating and doing whatever we do? Also, of course, I support Salem Saves the Animals, and I am so against any type of testing on the animals. So I'm praying, and I believe that we might have a shot if we just won't give up. And I'd like to thank everybody.
Thank you.
Wayne Rose, 19 Thundike Street. I put a poll out on Facebook, probably to about 25 pages. And the poll is 363 no votes to nine yes votes. So where did you guys, where did you guys come off saying that the public wants this? The public don't want this. So, I mean, the poll's here. 363 to nine. So... 363 to nine. Nine votes for this thing. 363 against it. I think it's political suicide for you guys.
Any other opponents?
Anne Beth Chinchilla, 50 Goldie Street, Revere. I have several concerns. One of them being the fact that if you bring it to a level two, are you aware that if they decide to make it a level two plus, which is a level two with enhancements, they can pretty much use the level three pathogens in it? So, well, it's not the best practice. With the right precautions and training in place, this work may be conducted safely in a biosafety level two plus containment. So those are the microorganisms that we're trying to avoid even talking about. We're trying to get away from the level three and go to level two. Do we even have a limit to avoid that enhancement to a level two plus? That's very, I don't know if you've even considered that. The other thing is to say that there are no live organisms. I mean, everybody knows there is. Everybody knows there is. In every lab, I mean, I've worked with nurses, and we all know there are absolutely live virus and pathogens in labs. That's what they work with. That's why they have animals. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a live virus or pathogen in an animal, because the animal's alive. It's not dead. That's what they're practicing on. And on top of it all, we don't want any animal testing. I don't know why we can't just roll this back and say, "That's it. No animal testing." I mean, this would have been better served if it was a hospital or a medical building. We have, we need more X-rays. We need more MRI. We need more physical therapy. We need more urgent care, not just a little drive-through. We need a lot of it. We have so many residents that are here and that are coming, and it would be the best thing. It's zoned for that. We're not taking the contract away from HYM. They can do it. But it needs to be something different. People, this is, everybody's upset. I mean, I know this is a small portion, but there are thousands of people that are upset about this. It's not serving the community. As far as jobs, it's just for, I don't know, some scientists and people, someone to sweep the floor, because these are specialized jobs. A medical building would be much better. No animal testing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I, I don't understand, how did this even get passed? Who voted this in? Not me. Not, not all these people. And who's going to vote it in when it, when they, when it comes before the board? You council people? Huh? This, this is what they call back-room politics, that nobody, none of the citizens were aware of this until it was in the paper. And you don't have half of what you, what you should have up here. So I, I can say, these people aren't here because they want it. We don't want this. I don't care what kind of lab it is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other opponents?
Hi, I'm Marie Brady from Lynn, Massachusetts. Also disagree with the fact that there's a bio lab coming in there. Why do we need it? Why do we need the bio lab? Can anybody answer that for me? Cure diseases, there's other places that have bio labs, you don't need them here. Especially one in Lynn, one in Revere, one in Salem. Why so many so close? That's what I want an answer to. Because it's going, it worries me, my grandson, my children, and I just don't want them, my animals, definitely my animals. I don't want it here. I don't want it in Lynn, I don't want it in Revere. I should be somewhere away from everybody else. There should be no people near it. Because you, you say it's a bio two, but it can easily be brought to a bio three. And it's, we don't want it. We definitely don't want it. In Lynn, Salem, Revere, Sagus, everywhere, we do not want it.
Thank you. Any other, any other opponents?
Michelle Kelly, Derby Road.
Want to move the, move the mic up?
Sure. Michelle Kelly, Derby Road. Mr. Visconti, May 9th, when I was here. Mr. Visconti, on May 9th, when I was here, I asked you a couple of questions, you said you were going to get back to me on them, I still haven't received the answers on them. I think a lot of the frustration...
I believe I asked you to email me those questions as well.
No.
I believe I, outside I did, but go on, go on.
Okay.
As well as me. Yes. Because I was there. Thank you.
I still, I've asked them over and over again, and I think people have asked them here tonight. The frustration stems out of the fact that we don't know how this came into being without any input from the residents of Revere. When we asked that question, we're not getting the answer.
Okay.
Okay? And the other thing I'd like to know is, this could be reduced to a level one. Mr. Rizzo made that point at one of the previous meetings, I believe it was at that May 9th meeting as well. Whose decision was it just to reduce it from a level three to a level two and not entertain the option of a level one?
I think his ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, said the maximum of level two.
What ordinance? Why does it...
The, the motion that Counselor Rizzo proposed was a maximum of a level two.
And there's no way that that could be reduced? There's no way that that could be changed?
That, that was what was proposed, is what I'm saying. And then this is an ordinance change from a level three to a level two. That's what this is for.
And none of the councilors here tonight will propose changing the ordinance or proposing moving to a level one?
I, I, this is for a level two. I can't speak on behalf of the other councilors, but this motion and this ordinance change is for a level two.
Okay. Thank you.
Wayne Rose, 19 Thunduck Street. Wait, so, can we get one of you guys, all ladies, to bring this to a level one? Can we get yous to file a motion? Or are yous going to just sit there and pass this level two?
Thanks.
It's crazy. We're asking you to help us. We're asking you to help us.
Thank you. Okay. Go ahead, because I, thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Lipson.
Hold on one second.
Hold on one second. Hold on one second. Okay? You're an opponent. Let, let, let this gentleman speak, of course.
Last week, my understanding was that the council had approved level two, is that right?
No.
Okay. Are we, are we going to vote on whether or not you're going to approve?
This is a public hearing.
Yes.
Then it goes to zoning.
Okay.
Okay? And the vote from the zoning subcommittee will get referred out to the regular council meeting. So there's no vote to see.
All right. I just wanted to let you know that if, if, if it is for a level two, there are different distinctions in level two. There's an A B S L two.
Before you continue, can you name an address for the record?
Yeah, Richard Chambers, 220 Broadway, Linfield, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
So I just want to make, let you know that if it is approved for a level two, there are levels of level two. And some do involve animal, live animals, and others involve blood and tissues. So just ask you to do your research.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're still in, we're still in. Any other opponents?
My name is Veronica Lorenza, and I live on Standish Road. And I would just like to know whose idea it was to have five stories for this lab, and who actually decided it was okay to put the lab there? I, I have kids that live there. I have kids that still live down here. I have grandchildren that live down here. And now I got to worry about a bio lab? I mean, it's bad enough we had Wuhan. And now what? Now we're going to have it in our backyard? I, I would like to know whose idea it was to put this there. Nobody could ever answer that for us. And no, and no one could even answer why the citizens of Revere, who are paying all the taxes in that here. Why we didn't have a say to begin with? It's like everything else that's being done in this, to the city, I'll tell you. All you do is, they take our money, like now, you can't even pay, for instance, you can't even pay your water bill or anything with your credit card, they take another 3%. I mean, this is totally ridiculous. But I would like answers, I'm telling you.
Thank you.
Hi. Am I on here? Gina Castiello, Revere. I'm not going to give out my address, I don't feel safe. I disagree of this bio lab going into Revere. We did not vote on this. And if this city cannot even respect human rights, how are they going to expect, respect animal rights in a level three or two laboratory that we're totally against? We didn't vote for this, and we didn't vote for the Human Rights Commission. So I think you should start considering representing all human and animal rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further opponents?
Victoria Natalie, Park Avenue, Revere. Peter did some testing. Peter is People for Ethical Treatment of Animals. Did some testing in 2018. 90% tests failed as treatments. 95% of their drug tests were safe for the animals in the lab, but failed for human use. These tests are painful, invasive. They are confined to lonely barren cages. And it's useless research, and afterwards either repeated on the same animal or they are killed. This uses our taxpayers' dollars. We don't really agree. We could use a combination of avicio testing, human cornmeal cell tests, human skin equivalents and chicken eggs, and eliminate the other animals. Many experiments are poorly designed, concluded, and analyzed with few reviews and oversight by the EPA, or the Food and Drug Administration, or the National Toxicology Program, or the Department of Agriculture. To give you an example, what, two examples of what these animals go through. There is a test called the DRAE'S test for toxicity on the skin and eyes of humans and animals. They take these animals, rabbits and dogs, they put these concentrated eye drops in their eyes, and they shave their skin, fur, scrape the skin tremendously, pour the stuff on it, and put plastic over it for 14 days. The eyes swell, there's discharge, ulceration, hemorrhaging, and blindness. Carnegie University out of Pittsburgh in 2018 sent 12 of these substances to 24 different labs, with the results from the same substances went from mild to severe. They put it on the market, 40% of those products were sold wrongly to humans in a severe, and was labeled mild. ITEX, E Y T E X, is a test that they could use instead of the DRAE'S test. It uses the protein from beans, plants, and they can insert it, and if they insert this liquid, if it turns clear on the eye, it is stimulated, they know that they have irritation. And they can test it with spectrophotometers, not human estimation.
Thank you.
The second, too long?
Yeah. Go ahead. We'll, we'll...
The second test is on marmosets, which are monkeys from South America. They drill holes in their skulls, and they thread electrodes through there into the stomach. They zip tie, zip tie the animal to restraints, and they remove the, they remove the ovaries, and they apply heat to it to see if they will have a hot flash. This is a menopause test. Marmosets don't go through menopause, so they make it all up. And my last comments are independent statistics, and the power therapists, and inflation of the results, because every lab works a little differently. This is dangerous because of this annual animal research extends into hypotheses that are used by epidemiologists and, and clinical researchers in the country. If they have false data to work on, it's very dangerous. So what we can do is speak up, buy cruelty-free products, cosmetics, tons of that is involved in it, shampoos, household products, and leave our bodies for scientific research when we die. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to just elaborate a little bit on that, about the monkey test, and it does happen. UMass Amherst is...
Name and address again for the record.
Anne Beth Chinchillo, 50 Goldie Street.
We're not going to keep, okay, so, so we can move forward. Everyone that has already spoken, we're not just going to keep coming up, you have your few minutes, but I, I will give you the, I will keep going. Go ahead. Go ahead.
So there are very horrible tests going on right now at UMass Amherst that were actually facilitated by Mass Bio, who is in there, they've got an office right in UMass. And I understand that these rooms will be rented by people from different colleges that are doing grants, which will be working with animals, including the horrible tests they're doing on monkeys. There was a big protest out in front of UMass Amherst recently, because this is pretty new. This all just started over there with all these monkeys. And Ben Affleck's brother was there, and there's been a lot of protests about this. People don't realize what's going on. They're cruel, it's horrible. And another big concern I have is that, you know, prior to the decision to make this a lab, there were 350 meetings with HYM and the residents, there were eight public meetings with the city councilors, and seven meetings with an advisory group, which each focused on a different aspect of the project. And then there was a comprehensive public meeting that explained all the phases of the project. But then once they changed it to a lab, we heard nothing, crickets, we didn't even know about this. So they were very informative, up to the point that they did the one-hady and decided no apartments, it's a lab, which is really not fair. It was, there was no transparency.
Okay. Any, any other opponents? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Councilors. Counselor Cargliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have some questions for Mr. Lipson, if you wouldn't mind, sir. My first question is, how close is the Cambridge lab to residents?
Well, there are a lot of labs. But they're zoned, in Cambridge, they're zoned for business A, so they could be in a lot of places. They, they tend to be clustered in Kendall Square, Elway, probably those two areas are the great majority, and some in North Point, which is the new, by the Charles.
Okay. And I think Mr. Chambers asked this question, he brought up a question that I had, was the A B S L levels.
There is BSL, there's A B S L, there's P B S L. And that's for plant work, that's also for, A B S L's for animal work. And these are, in the NIH guidelines, all distinguished by section. And it's true, there are separate BSLs assigned to microbiological work, plant work, and animal work.
Now, if we were to put a BSL one, are there different levels of A B S L? Could they put a very high A B S L, you know, research inside of a BSL one?
Well, generally, the BSL containment requirements, regardless of whether it's for animals or plants, or microbiological, if you are going to designate something BSL one, there are certain standards you have to meet for physical containment. They're fairly low and easy to meet. If you have a BSL two, they're slightly higher, but not that difficult to meet. It's mostly about negative airflow, that's how we enforce it into the non, from non-lab areas into the lab areas.
Point of information.
I'm sorry.
Mr. President, this is important. Okay. Dr. Lipson, I presume, and you really need to make it rudimentary to tell people exactly, in layman's terms, what you mean by negative airflow? Because people don't understand what a level one is, what a level two is, what type of, what type of diseases are in a level two, say, for example, HIV, hepatitis, for that matter, TB and so forth, whether you have to wear, like in a level three or a level four self-contained oxygen, you know, you have to really break it down for people to understand that, because it's going to be a lot of misstatements, and it's going to be infactual information passed on to people that is going to mislead everybody's interpretation.
Well, I appreciate that point. I don't think I can go, there's an awful lot of material to cover, and I don't think I can stand here and kind of break it all down. But very briefly, BSL one are generally agents that are not considered pathogens to humans. There are potential pathogens to some organisms, but there, there E. coli, that's been a version of E. coli that can't infect people. That would be an example of a BL one agent. BL, BL two agents are, the great majority of work is BL two. And this is essentially equivalent in risk to the blood-borne pathogen standard, so it's very similar, although I will say much safer, than most of the work that goes on in a clinical setting. So people who are processing blood or spinning it with a centrifuge, maybe they're extracting...
Like in a hospital.
Yeah, in a hospital clinic.
Excuse me for interrupting.
Yeah, that's right. So I would say BSL two, it's very appropriate to, although it's more exotic, the actual risk to human beings is probably a little lower than in a clinical testing lab in a hospital.
So you would have more risk of exposure to viruses and diseases in a hospital than you would at a bio level two lab? I'm asking him, I'm not making a statement.
May I have, may I have the floor back? I was not done asking questions.
Listen, let, let's control ourselves, or I will... Officer, can I have her removed from the, please? Can we have her removed from the city council chambers, please? Thank you. Thank you. Can we have her removed? Okay. Can we have that young lady removed? Thank you.
Is this why, is this why you did it in reverse? Is this why you did it in reverse?
We're going to take a five-minute recess.
What a setup, Jerry. What a setup. What a setup.
So you would have more risk of exposure to viruses and diseases in a hospital than you would at a bio level two lab? Hold on. I'm asking him, I'm not making a statement.
May I have, may I have the floor back? I was not done asking questions.
Listen, let's control ourselves. I will, officer, can I have her removed from the, please, can we have her removed from the city council chambers, please? Thank you. Thank you. Can we have her removed? Can we have that young lady, uh, removed? Thank you.
Is this why, is this why you did it in reverse? Is this why you did it in reverse?
We're gonna take a five-minute recess.
What a setup, Jerry. What a setup. What a setup.
So I'm being asked to leave, I'm being asked to leave by one of the--
Can we, can we have a five-minute recess, please? Crazy.
Thank you. Okay. Welcome back. No, you read. Ashley, if you can read the rules of conduct.
Open meeting law in Massachusetts general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20G. No person shall address a meeting of a public body without permission of the chair, and all persons shall, at the request of the chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If, after clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting, and if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting. the meeting.
Okay, um, I believe where we left off is, uh, opponents, that side of the hearing has, um, been closed. We were, uh, we were letting the counselors, uh, had some questions, but I believe, uh, our guest had, uh, left for the evening and is willing to answer any questions if you, uh, put them in an email format, um, to Ashley. Ashley will have, uh, those questions answered for you. This, uh, will be referred to zoning, um, for further discussion.
Calendar item number four, hearing called disordered on an amendment to the revised ordinances of the City of Riviere relative to the legalization of accessory dwelling units.
Any proponents regarding the legalization of accessory dwelling units? Name and address.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Frank Stringie, City Planner, Department of Planning and Community Development. We had a, uh, committee working on this for the past six months, comprised of myself, the building inspector, our city assessor, Deputy Fire Chief, uh, and Ruben Cantor joined us, as well as, uh, the mayor's administrative assistant and our legal counsel from the, uh, Office of Inspection Services. So, the main premise of this ordinance is, is basically to provide a means for residents, particularly seniors, single parents, um, uh, families with grown children, to give them an opportunity to remain in their homes and obtain extra income and, and kind of get multi-generational in the city, so, as, as it was in the past, where families would remain in their homes and have elders stay with them and so on. It also provides a broader range of accessible and more affordable housing in the city. So, uh, in summary, uh, it, it's applicable to the RA, RA-1 district, RB, RB-1 district. RA, single family, Point of Pines, Oak Island. RA-1 is, uh, single family in North Riviere. RB is predominantly most of the city. So, uh, what we'll do is, um, it'll only apply to existing owner occupied, single-family homes only. All right? And no accessory units shall be permitted below the FEMA 100-year base flood elevation. We have a lot of units, uh, within our 100-year floodplain. Uh, if they try to make an, uh, ADU under that elevation of the 100-year floodplain, they would not be permitted to. It must be located in a principal structure. It will not be allowed within a duplex, our townhouse, our condominium. There shall be no parking requirements for an accessory unit if the existing single-family use conforms to the parking requirements of the zoning ordinance, and the accessory unit is within one-half-mile radius of MBTA T station. In all other instances, the ordinance is requiring one additional parking space for an accessory dwelling unit, above and beyond what is allowed for a single family. So, a single family is required to have two parking spaces. It would be required now to have three. And we're allowing a little flexibility with that parking space. Obviously, they can't park in the front yard, but they'd be allowed to park three cars in tandem in the side yard, which, uh, which is a case why a lot of them being denied right now and ending up in ZBA. So, regarding the ADUs, in the RA district, single-family district, uh, you have to, the, the maximum square footage for an ADU would be 600 square feet with one bedroom. In the RB district, the maximum square footage for an ADU would be 900 square feet, allowing two bedrooms. And, um, we also have provisions in here for transfer of ownership to make sure the ADU has a certificate and the new owner maintains the, uh, conformance with the ADU ordinance and lives in the unit for at least two years. So, that's basically it in a nutshell. I, uh, you know, um, obviously, what's happening in the city, uh, there are a number of single-family homes that have illegal apartments, are in-law apartments. This is an opportunity to make them safe, uh, compliant with building code and fire safety codes and, you know, and allow the residents to have what they had, as long as they don't change the, the character of that house. We don't allow any additions. We're not allowing accessory units to be in accessory structures like garages or, or other structures on, on the lot. And, uh, that's what's before you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Good evening, counsel, Mr. President.
Welcome tonight.
I rise in, in favor of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, uh, just very broadly and generally. Uh, there are two items before you tonight. One is, uh, inclusionary zoning ordinance and, uh, this ADU ordinance, and both of them do work hand in hand in terms of strategies around, uh, maintaining affordability in our community. And I think everyone knows that there are a number of units that are in our community that, uh, people have struggled with, in-law apartments, other units that are unsafe, and, uh, the path to, to make those safer, make sure that life safety improvements are made, and to make sure that, uh, we're maintaining affordability in the community is through, uh, adopting an accessory dwelling unit, uh, ordinance. So, happy to, uh, answer any questions, and I rise in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents? I mean proponents, proponents.
Good evening, Attorney Jerry D'Ambarozio, 14 Proctor Ave. I am here on a pro se basis. Uh, as many individuals in this room know, and the counsel knows, I do quite a bit of permitting work in the, uh, in the City of Riviere. I would, uh, I would tell you that this ordinance is an excellent one, uh, because what it, it, in essence, does is two things. One, it allows people who already have in-law apartments to, uh, legalize them. What it, and what it does to legalize them is to upgrade them, to make them safer, to make them code compliant. So, if we, as we currently have in-law apartments that are kind of, uh, under the line, if you will, and not being inspected, they tend to be a little bit more unsafe. This provision will allow homeowners to make the needed remedial measures to fix them and to bring them above the line. The second big thing that this ordinance will do is it adds, it truly adds to the affordable housing stock in the City of Riviere. In my experience, most of these accessory dwelling units that are currently in the market have rents between 800 to 1,500 a month, and that often includes the cable, that often includes the heat, that often includes the water, that often includes all the other accessories. So, it overwhelmingly adds to the housing stock, and it does so across our city, uh, in a, in a, in a very blind way. So, for those reasons, um, I rise in support of it. I have no client here tonight, other than to say to you that that's my experience. Uh, I think it's a good measure, especially for, uh, you know, the citizens and voters of Riviere. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Good evening, Laura Holmes, 243 Campbell Avenue. I just have a question. Uh, I do support ADUs. I support anything that provides more housing. Everybody knows, we've got to get more affordable housing, especially here. So, to the extent the ADUs are part of the formula that helps gets us that, I'm all for it. My question is, I didn't hear anything, uh, in Mr. Stringie's comments. Maybe he has an answer to, uh, how will these be dealt with regarding short-term rentals? What's to stop a whole bunch of these being built
Good question.
to be Airbnbs, you know?
Okay. We'll get back to that
Thank you.
being a, a proponent, um, and we'll ask that question to, uh, Mr. Stringie. Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. Any opponents? Anybody opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we'll ask, we'll close that side. Counselors. Counselor Maravito.
So, I have a question. So, will the taxation be different on the ADUs?
Good question. Does anyone have Can we have
Good evening, Dana Branch of Fordy, Chairman of the Board of Assessors. Uh, the taxation, the valuation-wise, of course, it'll change, right? Uh, if they're adding livable square footage, if they're adding kitchens, bathrooms, uh, things like that, it'll, it'll add to the value. As far as like the class code, it's going to be a single-family home. That's what the occupancy will be with an additional dwelling unit.
So, it's not going to change.
The legal occupancy will be single-family with, uh, an additional dwelling unit, so it won't be taxed as a two-family per se with the land use code, but again, it'll have two kitchens, it'll have multiple, you know, bathrooms.
Excuse me. All right. Come on. He already gave his name and address. Go ahead.
Uh, so again, evaluation will change, um, and that's how it'd be classified.
So, i- it's basically a classification change
Right.
as well?
Right, yeah. So, the state doesn't have, you know, single-family with in-law codes, so it's either a single-family or a two-family.
So, you can almost guarantee anyone with an in-law is going to have increased taxes next year if we pass this?
If we're aware of it now, they're already being taxed for it, right? We tax what exists, so
They're being
two kitchens in homes.
So, if they're, they're being taxed on a two-family, so it will decrease their taxes?
No.
So, it's going to be the same as a two-family?
It depends if it's, so I guess it's two different categories, right? It's if it's pre-existing or if it's going to be new, added to it, right? So, if it's new, added, not nonexistent and added to a single-family, they're, they're going to see a tax increase.
So, current
If it's existing and we're already aware of it, then their tax implications shouldn't really change.
So, there are a lot of apartment, uh, a lot of single families with in-laws currently that way back when, when apartment, when basement apartments were deemed legal, um, they actually used a, uh, a window as a second form of egress. So, when you're looking at the whole picture, those people, a lot of them are still getting taxes at a two, as a two-family, because they just look at the mailboxes when they drive around and they, that's how they deem the evaluation, correct? Whether it's a two-family or
No, I mean, it's a lot, a lot deeper than that, but that's a legality issue. Again, we just tax use.
So, but there are a lot of
So, if it's here and it's existing
Dana, hold on, I'm still talking. So, there are still a lot of two, um, single families, well, the technically two families, because they were two families way back when. So, if they, we have a category, category change, right? If they go and pull a permit, they're going to have to re, soon as they pull that one permit, they're going to have the, they're going to have to front the burden of that cost, right? To bring everything up to code, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first, one of my questions, Ms. Holmes asked. I'm reading here in Section 17 dot 25 dot 020. There shall be no borders and lodges allowed in either dwelling unit? Could we just get clarification that that will not means that they're not allowed to use short-term rentals like, uh, like Airbnb and Verbo and whatnot?
Yes, counsel, that was the intent of the ordinance. They had that requirement in there, so there would be no Airbnbs and, and no borders.
Thank you, Mr. Stringie. Um, in, uh, dot 030 here, the parking requirements, I see that accessory dwelling unit in cases where the accessory dwelling unit is within a single-family dwelling that is located one-half-mile radius of an MBTA transit station, uh, and the existing single-family dwelling meets the required parking of two off-street parking spaces, doesn't need parking spots? Is that true?
No, will not need any more parking spaces.
So, my question is, what about the person that's already converted their home to a two-family that spent the money to pave out the driveway that needed four 9x18 spots? I mean, are we going to, are we going to allow this if they want to convert to a two-family now, or, I'm just curious about the parking requirement now? Is that going to change for somebody who's going to apply to become a two-family?
No, there's a differential there, because it, um, if, if an accessory unit would be considered different than a two-family, so if they're applying to legalize their home to a two-family, then they would have to meet those requirements. If it was a two-family assessed for more than 10 years, they're protected, they're grandfathered in. All they have to do is bring the apartment, their legal apartment, up to code.
Thank you.
And there would be no additional parking required?
Thank you.
Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I will be a proponent, uh, on this amendment, but I, I do have some questions. I know some of them have already been asked. Um, I was curious, and again, I know we can adjust this, we, this is needed. I mean, the city, we have a lot of people that come to us on, on a monthly basis, um, trying to sell their homes and, you know, because their grandmother owned it, and then they have to bring it up to code, and/or the, the sale gets disrupted, and it causes a lot of stress and, um, issues on families that are, that are dealing with, you know, a home that was built 30 or 40 years ago, and they assumed it was a legal, legal apartment. Um, so, we know that we deal with this, the city deals with this all the time. Um, so, I think it's definitely, uh, needed. It gives everyone a pathway to legitimizing their existing, uh, unit. It will add to the affordable housing stock naturally, just by supply, um, and typically, as we do realize, the high, the high-end apartments on the beach compared to the, um, single, single-bedroom in-law in any of our neighborhoods typically, uh, ends up being more affordable. Um, it's not, uh, a large, uh, you know, luxury unit. So, that, that'll definitely be a, a win for the residents of the city, but I was curious where this, this has been a little bit of a thorn in a lot of people's side over the last 10 years. I think this was actually maybe even further back when these accessory dwellings in the fu, in the fire department and building department really started cracking down on them. Is there, can we offer somewhat of an expiration, uh, date on this where, you know, it's kind of almost like, um, when we had the, the, the inflow, um, moratorium? We wa, we wanted people to legitimize their, their exiting water in, in their sewers, um, so we gave them a two or a four-year window to update properly, to bring it to safety, um, rather than, you know, leaving this for the next 10, 20 years, where I can definitely see people taking advantage of this and taking advantage of the system. You know, uh, we say you can't grow the size of the property, but what's to say someone just adds exist, existing space, and then three years later goes ahead and applies for that ADU? They're, they'd be circumventing really the intention of this law, and that's, that's, that's something I'd be concerned with.
Are you asking, then, that there be a time period limit?
I'm just, I'm thinking that that might, that might curb future, um, advantage being taken of this, because the second concern and the concern of many of our residents is then you be, could come into an area of over-congestion of neighborhoods, because most of these are going to be ones going into twos, where, quite frankly, you know, if you take away parking requirements and you reduce it, I'm not suggesting that legitimizing people that are paying, like, like Counselor Morabito said, already paying for two, but they're not legally a two-family, they're a one with an in-law, half a Riviere, you know? Um, and you're taxing them right now. I want to give them a pathway, but I also don't want to give the pathway to people that are looking to merely take advantage of it. They can grow the, they can expand a single-family today, and then three years down the road say, oh, by the way, um, I have this ADU that I want to create, and now they're overburdening to, uh, residential neighborhoods. And that's just, you got to, you got to think about that, because that's what happens, right?
Yeah. That's something we can discuss in zoning subcommittee.
I look forward to it. Yeah, thank you.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm definitely for this. Um, my mother was from Italy, and she had a lot of friends, and they had all second kitchens, and, uh, when they had to sell their houses, or when they sell, sold their houses, they had to take the kitchen out because it was a one-family house. Um, so, I'm really for this. I think it's a, a great move, uh, that the city's doing, and, uh, I'll be voting yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and, uh, my question is, uh, kind of piggybacking off of, uh, Counselor McKenna's, um, you know, for so many years, we've had homes, uh, being taxed at two and three families, and come to find out they're, they're one families. Um, and, and then, as Counselor Keith said, um, you know, when they, we started to get more stringent with the fire codes and, and stuff like that, we made, um, homeowners rip these units out. Now, we're going to reverse that, and I get it, it's a different time, but is there anything in play or, or there could be, is there anything that we can do to help the people that were just forced to, to remove those units? Now, the law changed and, and they, they're, they would be allowed to have them.
Yes, in some, in some cases, they would actually, if they wanted to come in as an ADU, they'd have to retrofit the unit because it would have, it'd have to have a maximum area of nine hundred square feet if it was in the RB district and no more than two bedrooms. So if you had a three-bedroom and you wanted to make an ADU out of it, obviously doesn't qualify as an ADU, you'd have to make changes within the layout. But, I mean, you're getting a legalized unit that you can rent out or have a family member live in, so it's a big bonus.
Thank you.
Plays this in committee? Yeah. This is going into zoning. If there are no further questions, zoning?
Calendar item number?
Next hearing.
Calendar item number five, hearing called as ordered on an ordinance establishing inclusionary zoning in the city of Revere.
You can start off with proponents.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. As I said earlier, there are two items, accessory dwelling units and also inclusionary zoning. I will say at the outset that you all know that we went through our first master planning process in forty years, next stop, Revere. And one of the key takeaways from our master plan, which we got a lot of feedback and a lot of great public engagement throughout that process, was around housing and affordability in terms of the growth in our city. And so inclusionary zoning and presenting the first ever inclusionary zoning ordinance to the city is much needed where we are in terms of the amount of growth and the demand that we see for, for affordable housing solutions in, in our community and frankly, throughout the region. More and more, and I know you all hear it, that folks have said that it's becoming more difficult to be able to live here and be able to continue to live here. And we've prided ourselves as a, as an affordable gateway community that has great public transportation and beautiful public beach. But the reality is that nearly or over fifty percent of our renters in the city are overburdened with their housing costs. Forty-four percent of homeowners who live in the city right now are overburdened with their housing costs. And, you know, this is a strategy, it's on a silver bullet, but much like accessory dwelling units, much like the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that you all helped create, these are strategies that we're implementing to make sure that for the long term, people can continue to live here, can raise their family here and are not burdened by the challenges of affordability. The details in the ordinance are that twelve percent of new units that would be set aside as deed-restricted affordable housing units. The affordability would be set at sixty percent of the area median income, and that's for both rented and owned units. Inclusionary zoning would be mandatory for new construction. And the units would be dispersed evenly throughout the development, meaning in terms of the types of units and where they're situated in a building would be, would be even and the equal and proportional to size and, and the make of the market rate housing that's included in, in a building. There are some benefits that I think are important, and I know we'll, we'll talk about them. And it is, you know, part of what we need to do and you'll, I'm sure you'll hear some moaning and groaning from some people who may not want to help and build affordable units, but there are some offsets that we've included in this, and those include parking reductions for folks that are within a certain radius of public transit. They also include dimensional, a reduction in dimensional requirements and the waiving of certain permit fees. The last thing I'll say is I want to thank the folks who took the time and effort to help us put this before you. For eight months, we had a group working on behalf of the city and they were working in conjunction with Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and they were, they made up our Inclusionary Zoning Advisory Board. I'm sure you'll hear from some of those members today. And I just want to offer my gratitude for their hard work in, in putting this together. It took nearly around eight months for us to do a lot of the analysis, a lot of the data crunching and, and quite frankly, the work to put a very polished and good policy before all of you tonight. Look forward to the ongoing conversations and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other proponents?
All right, can you all see the presentation on your screens? No. Well, in the interest of just continuing, I can just proceed, and if I think Ruben was going to check out the tech, I can proceed or hold on, whatever you all prefer. All right, great. My name's Alexis Smith. I'm a principal planner with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and we have been serving as the, providing technical assistance to the city to develop this inclusionary, inclusionary ordinance, excuse me, ordinance. And I thank you all for, for having me here tonight and thanks to the, to the mayor for the introduction. Yep, all right. We're going to keep going without a presentation. I can pass the presentation along to you all afterwards so that you can see it and have then, there's going to be a lot of numbers coming forward, and so I will be sure to pass this along to you all so you can see, see the numbers in front of you. So I will start off just by saying, you know, what, what is inclusionary zoning? Folks have already been discussing it, but essentially it is a policy that requires that a certain percentage of all new homes in new, new development, oh, here we go. A certain percentage of homes in all new development be affordable. Thanks. Thank you. All right. I know. All right. So inclusionary zoning requires that a certain percentage of all homes in new development be affordable. That's, that's the, the simple explanation. Just to differentiate this from the accessory dwelling units, which is what, what you all were discussing earlier, there's, there's a lot of, there are two, there are two policies that kind of complement each other, whereas accessory dwelling units provide some, what we call natural affordability, they're just tend to be less expensive because they're smaller or older. Inclusionary zoning creates deed-restricted affordability, which means that the homes that are affordable are legally required to be affordable to a certain income level and remain affordable for a set period of time. The way it's written in, in Revere's ordinance, in Revere's proposed ordinance is in perpetuity or ninety-nine years. I just, a couple of important things to understand about how inclusionary zoning works. It relies on private developers to create affordable housing without, with, with little reliance on public subsidy. And I want, that's something that I want everyone to keep in mind because that, that private development piece is, we're going to be getting back into that. It cannot replace deeply affordable housing, so the, you know, all affordable developments that folks in town, you know, that a lot of great nonprofits in town are doing, this is not meant to be a replacement for this because this is provided by, you know, private developers. We can't get deeply affordable units, but it is a great way to leverage private development to create affordability. And last piece, because we're, because this is, because this is a tool that relies on private development, we need to really make sure to balance costs, balance the costs. Otherwise, you risk deterring, deterring private development, which is something we don't want to see happen. So I'm going to spend a lot of time talking about balancing those costs. So why here? As, as the mayor indicated, you know, rents, housing costs here are expensive and getting more expensive and need here is great. I won't get into all of the, these numbers again, I'll pass this along to you, but as you all know, there's, there's a lot of great need in, in the city. In, in, in greater Boston, which is a large area, the median income is over a hundred twenty thousand dollars, but in Revere, the median income is less than half of that. So Revere is, is again, a community where there's a lot of need for affordable housing. Over half of Revere households are considered low-income. These are a couple of different gradations of, of low-income from, you know, extremely low, which might be someone making minimum wage, all the way up to moderately low-income, which might be a teacher or a fireman. And so this, because of this need, the master plan that the city adopted in 2020 recommended inclusionary zoning as one of many housing policies. So the process, how we got to where we are, as, as the mayor said, you know, this process has been going on for about eight months. It's involved extensive collaboration with the, with an advisory committee who's met several, you know, multiple times over the course of the, the project, two public forums, and then a series of interviews and focus groups with, with stakeholders. One thing I want to emphasize is this middle piece, policy options. We spent a lot of time going back and forth on what the right policy options might be. We tested dozens of different scenarios, different, tweaking different things. We made, we made changes to those based on input received at the public forum. We continued to make changes to those based on input received from the city and, and from the advisory committee. And I think this, this, the policy in front of you represents a real, a real collaborative effort from months of, of analysis and input. Again, the policy is based on need, input, and then also on financial analysis. One of the things that we did was perform a technical analysis, again, getting back to that point, to make sure that, that this policy isn't something that's going to deter development. I'll skip over the, the community engagement piece quickly since I already mentioned that, but again, this involved an advisory committee, two public forums, interviews with probably about a dozen development professionals, so developers, nonprofit and for-profit developers, property managers, realtors and lenders, to make sure that we're really understanding what's going on in Revere, what the local housing market here looks like. So our analysis is very grounded in local conditions. Again, community engagement, kind of one of the, the big, big takeaways from what we heard at the forums were support for maximizing the number of affordable units to the greatest extent possible, support for, for cost offsets provided that they truly were to achieve greater affordability, limited support for allowing a developer to offer a payment instead of building the affordable units on-site. And again, and very strong support for, for local preference, which essentially means that Revere residents get, get first dibs on, on the affordable units. Finally, this financial analysis piece looked at all of these different elements and all different combinations to arrive at a policy that is balanced and, and feasible and also at the same time maximizes community goals. I'm not going to go through all of these in detail, but happy to come back to them afterwards if you all have any questions. And again, just to, to focus on this development feasibility piece, the metric that we used, we used what's called a development pro forma, which is a tool that developers use to essentially understand, hey, is this project in a pencil? Is it going to work? Do I want to move forward with this? And we, based on kind of, on both interviews with, with local developers and industry rules of thumb and standards, we said that we, any policy that reduces the rate of return below fifteen percent is, you know, off, off, off the, off the table, and any policy that reduces the return more than one, decreases the return more than one percent is, again, too, too much. We define that as the threshold past which the feasibility would be at risk. Again, those are super wonky numbers and I can get into the details, but I just wanted to make it clear to everyone that this is something that we were thinking seriously about. So quick overview of the policy, I'm going to go through each of these in detail, but just so you have it in front of you, it consists of the affordability requirements, cost offsets, and then kind of other, other pieces of the requirements. Quickly, affordable, affordability, twelve percent of units in new development are required to be affordable. And I want to stress that's a new development, not an existing development. So any existing developments would not be subject to this. This is in the middle of what's, what's commonly seen in Massachusetts. This, the policy would apply to, would be, excuse me, the affordable units would be for residents earning roughly sixty percent of area median income. This is just, the, what area median income is specifically depends on how many people are in your household, but this is roughly what that would, what that would look like. Again, this is, I, I want to emphasize that the sixty percent AMI is at the low end of what you see in Massachusetts. Many policies, the most common policy, the most common affordability level in Massachusetts and nationwide is eighty percent of area median income. Here, we were really focusing on that lower affordability level because we wanted it to be responsive to, to local need. And the reason that sixty percent AMI at twelve percent of units is possible is from the cost offsets, which I'm going to get into in a moment. Oh, but first, local preference. The policy includes local preference for Revere residents in up to seventy percent of the units, which is the maximum number allowed by the state. And that essentially means that Revere residents are, are first in the lottery. They, they move to the top of the list in the housing lottery. The second piece of this is cost offsets, and this is what enables that deeper affordability. One, I, these, these, the, the cost offsets in the Revere's policy include some things that are common throughout the state and then some other things that are a little less common because one of the most common offsets, which is a density bonus, doesn't really work in Revere because, because its zoning is already relatively permissive. So we got creative and came up with some other different, different mechanisms by which we could really go for that, that deeper affordability. Specifically, the park, the offsets include, first, a parking reduction. This is based on what is currently being, this is based on both what we've heard from, from developers in terms of, you know, what, what, where, where folks think the market is and what we have seen approved by the, the ZBA. Right now, we've, the city provided with us with some data of approved multifamily projects over the past seven years since 2014, and virtually every project sought a variance for parking. And so this is based on that, based on what is currently being approved in, in Revere. The second piece of this is, and, and the benefit here is parking is expensive. It costs up to thirty thousand dollars to build a single structured parking space and that, those costs get carried, get passed directly on to residents of the future building. And if there, if the development is in a transit-rich area, that parking is not necessarily needed. This is not saying developers cannot build more if there is need or demand, it is just not requiring them to build more. The second piece is dimensional relief. Again, this is based on where previous developments have sought and have been approved for variances in the past seven or eight years, and those are reduction in minimum lot size, increase in the maximum floor area ratio and a decrease in required setbacks. And finally, the building, waiving of building permit fee. This would, the only permit fee that would be waived was the building permit fee. This would not apply to sewer or any other, any other permitting, associated permitting fees. And again, this piece is pulled in primarily because of density bonus, which is one of the most common offsets in Massachusetts, just isn't, doesn't make sense in Revere. A final piece is that the ordinance, the proposed ordinance would not permit in loop, in, in Luffy except for smaller projects. The reason that we're recommending it for smaller projects is because these smaller projects, twelve units or less, are just harder to make work, and a lot of times, these are the projects that make sense and, you know, there's smaller projects through, throughout the neighborhood. And so those ones, I, this is something that would make a difference in terms of making the project more, more workable, more able to move forward. But beyond that, based on what we've heard from the, the community, conversations with the advisory committee, folks feel pretty strongly that, and, you know, data of policies that have been enacted supports that, you know, we want units, if you want, if the goal is to build affordable units as quickly as possible, then not allowing an in Luffy is the way to do that. So here's a summary once again of all the pieces of the policy. I can leave this up while discussion is going on or, and...
This is going to go into zoning, so we're going to have further...
So we're going to have further discussion.
Okay, yes, all right. So I will close that out here and thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Wayne Rose, 19 Thunder Street. Mr. Mayor, did I not hear you say, people that disagreed with this, they'll be moaning and whining? Is that what he said, moaning and whining? I'm just asking a question.
Mr. Rose, can you address, just address the chair first?
Mr. Visconti, did he not say moaning and whining?
Are you a proponent or an opponent? I'm asking.
I'm neither right now.
Okay, so then please.
I'm asking the mayor a question.
We're on proponents.
Mr. Mayor, would you adjust that?
We're on proponents.
You said that people be moaning and whining?
We're on proponents. Wayne, Wayne.
I didn't think so.
Point of order. Point. Proponents?
Mr. Chairman, how are you? I'm here to make your, 70 Lowe's Street. I'm here to stand in support of the inclusionary zoning ordinance as proposed and as is before the council today. I think that this will allow us the opportunity to increase the housing production and to reach the deeper levels of affordability that we need to maintain Revere a working-class city. Unfortunately, many of the people in this room might have been forced out of the city or have had family members have been forced out of the city because they can no longer afford to live here. And this inclusionary zoning proposal really goes above and beyond to ensure that we have onsite units, that we are allowing for multimodal transportations by incentivizing, you know, low, no, or lower construction limits on the parking, on the parking thing. It also, I think, supports our smaller developers, many of whom are from Revere. And we want to continue to support by ensuring that they have, that we're waiving the permit fees and obviously reducing costs through the parking reductions. I'm here not just as a resident, I'm also here as the president of one of the local nonprofits, which is called El Consiglio Latino, and as a planning board member. And I thank you all very much for your work on this. And I urge you to, after it goes through planning, tomorrow, I think, and then zoning, I urge you to vote for this proposal as is. Thank you.
Any other proponents?
I have a list of folks who need... Debbie DeJulio, 25 Winterbrev, Revere. I'm here as director of Elder Affairs on behalf of the seniors of Revere. As the mayor mentioned, especially the renting seniors. A house gets sold in Revere, and the seniors that are renting have to look for another apartment. So they're looking for something affordable. As you all know, there's nothing affordable in Revere. So now they're looking for senior housing. Or a senior stays in their home over their lives, you know, most of their lives, but they're unable to afford costly repairs, unable to keep the outside of their home up, unable to make the house accessible, for a senior accessible. So they look for senior housing. I give them an RHA form. I give them a state form. I suggest jack sadder or veterans housing. Both lists, all these lists alone. You all know this because I'm sure you get calls about the lists. I'm asked questions every day about senior housing. There's no help. You get on a list. We will all be seniors soon. And I'm, like I said, on behalf of the seniors, we need to really consider what's best for the vulnerable population. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Sharon Fosbury with the Neighborhood Developers. Good evening, City Council President Visconti and City Councilors. Thank you so much for letting me speak and comment tonight. I would like to speak in support of this proposal and urge you, and kindly urge you to adopt it as is. As the mayor has explained, the master planning process revealed the need, revealed the need of the cost assistance that residents need. We have 44% of owners and 53% of renters who are cost burdened. That means they're spending over 30% of their income on housing. That's way too much. And the numbers have just gotten worse with the pandemic. With the increasing cost of living, people are struggling to pay rent. They're struggling to pay, to stay in their homes. So if more affordable housing would benefit these Revere residents who are struggling to pay for housing, in addition to this increasing need, there's also a need to meet standards set by the state of Massachusetts. The state of Massachusetts has a standard of 10% of housing stock to be affordable in the city. Prior to the pandemic, it was 8.11% in Revere was the affordable housing stock. That discrepancy has grown because there's just been market rate housing that's just been built and built and built. There's not the adequate amount of affordable housing in the city of Revere. So the 12% is a good, is a good number. We need more. We need more than that, but it's a good start. It's a good start to have 12% of units. And as MAPC has described, it's financially feasible and doable. So like, that is definitely a great recommendation. Another reason why inclusionary zoning is needed is because it stabilizes rents. Instead of renters being at the whim of the landlords who may decide to increase the rents or decrease the rents, like they may decide to raise it by $100, $200, whatever. The rents of affordable housing are de-restricted. There is a certain limit to how much you can raise rents. Revere residents need that stability. They need to know what their rent is going to be next year or the year after. They need to know what's going to be next month. There are so many residents who are getting displaced because the rents just keep going up and they can't afford their housing. Rents have continued to increase and families continue not to be able to afford to stay. I talked to more and more and more families who are getting displaced from Revere, the place that they've called home for such a long time. In this proposal, 70% of the units will be for Revere residents. That means we're not getting other people from other cities coming in. This is for your Revere constituents so that they can stay in the city that they've called home. So 70% of units is fabulous.
This is going to go into zoning, so I'm sure there's quite a few other people that want to speak. I don't mean to cut you off.
No, I respect your time.
You know, it's... I would like to make a point that you're from the Neighborhood Developers. Unfortunately, when we voted on one beach street, the Neighborhood Developers did not take the people from Revere. And that is a big problem. That has nothing to do with, I understand, thank you. But we have probably a few others in proponents, so I'd just like to speed it up.
Okay, no worries. No, I'm just...
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I would just say to say that inclusionary zoning has been a tool that has been passed by 140 municipalities in Massachusetts. It was passed in Somerville in 1989. In 2022, we can pass it here in Revere.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any other proponents?
Hello, Valentina Moreno, 184 Shirley Avenue. Inclusionary zoning is a needed strategy to tackle the housing crisis in Revere. It is not the solution, I know, but it can help Revere in the long term to have more units available. My work as the Housing Stability Officer revolves around the housing needs of Revere residents every single day. I can go into detail, but I don't need to. I feel like you guys know how much pain, how much suffering these people have every single day. 311 sends me referrals every single day. So I'm pretty sure there's going to be some people going over their experiences. Housing instability affects households. It affects one person, it affects children. With better housing, there's better nutrition, job opportunities, access to care, transportation, opportunities for isolation during COVID. Imagine that. Do you guys remember when so many people went going homeless during the pandemic? With better housing, there's mental health opportunities for better mental health. And more importantly, one that goes closest to home for everyone here is community. I love Revere. I work for the city. My parents have a business here. We love our city. I want to continue Revere to being the great city that I love. The housing crisis is the everything crisis. I repeat, the housing crisis is the everything crisis. Want to make sure, for me, for many people here, housing is a human right. Revere needs more affordable housing, and we all know that. We need it now. I stand with... I stand with my neighbors to make sure you understand we need the inclusionary policy to pass, the inclusionary zoning policy to pass. We can't afford to lose more time, to lose more Revere residents going somewhere else or going in the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Laura Holmes, 243 Campbell Avenue. And I'm speaking as a resident. And I'm also speaking, I submitted written testimony, so I'm not going to get into the data and all that kind of stuff because there's a lot of people who have really worked hard to develop that, and we have that, and, you know, footnotes are good and all that stuff. But I just want to speak from my heart tonight. I have been really, really proud for the last couple of years to be working with the Revere Housing Coalition. And the reason I feel proud of this is the Revere Housing Coalition is volunteers. It's seniors from our senior housing. It's youth, some of the youth who work as ambassadors on our COVID teams and stuff like that have been members of the Coalition. But it's, and we have, you know, people from all sectors. We've had developers on our coalition. It's an open membership group. But it is, its mission is to be resident-led. And what that has meant is to help make sure that all of our meetings are bilingual. There probably could be three or four languages to include everybody who's been trying to come through our meetings every month through COVID. And people have become interested in doing this just because they know we need affordable housing and they want to be part of helping to make that happen. And these are people who are saying, this is what it means to be involved as citizens? I mean, I know you guys have had a really long night already, and I'm sorry for my informality. But, you know, hey, you know, this coalition of people has been coming together saying, how can the city make more affordable housing? Because we think our kids are not going to be able to live here. We can't, we can't make it so that our kids can live here. It's really sad. Our seniors can't live here. I don't know if I'm going to be able to continue to live here because rents and home owning prices just kept higher and higher. So everybody, I think, I think there's broad consensus to do something. And the coalition has spent its time studying and educating ourselves. We're doing this in Spanish and in English. We're like reading things together, breaking it down, asking people from the city to come and talk to us, asking people from MAPC and different places to come talk to us. We welcome you all to come and talk to us. Because we're trying, I'm coming, I'm going to stop. I'm going to stop. I know you want to get out of here.
No, it has nothing to do, we still have a full agenda.
To encourage the citizens in this way is really positive. We need more affordable housing. And the reason to support inclusionary zoning is because we have nothing right now. There's no, nothing, asking developers to provide more housing. And I know that you guys are going to, there is some support from people I've talked with for in lieu payments. And if I can just drive home one message tonight. If those in lieu payments don't create on par units of housing, it's not going to help us get affordable housing. So that's why I think it's right we don't have the in lieu payments.
All right. Any other proponents?
Good evening.
Yes.
My name is Wafa Kinawi, 38 Thunder Street, Revere.
Welcome.
I'm here to support the affordable housing. As we know, most of, all the cities, they have affordable housing. They have Chelsea, Medford, in all the cities. Why not Revere? I'm a Revere resident, and I'm a low-income. We know that all, most of the Revere residents are immigrants. I'm an immigrant. Half of my salary goes to rent. And I love Revere. I have like offers in other cities. I was selected for an affordable apartment, but I don't want to move from here. And as part of my job, my job requirements is to be a resident of Revere. I'm working as a family liaison in Revere Public Schools. And part of our requirement to be here is to... I don't want to move in any other cities. I love Revere, my kids love the beach, and we really need affordable housing in the city. And with the pandemic, a lot of landlords like raised the rent, and people, they cannot afford it. And even if you don't like your apartment and you want to move, you have to pay first class security, and it's a burden for most of the residents. With the affordable apartments, I have friends, they pay just like, deposit 500. And they're luxury apartments. And I really support to have this in our city. We love Revere, and we don't want to move anywhere else.
Thank you. Yeah, one more.
Sorry, I'm going to be real quick. I know everyone wants to get out of here. Michelle Kelly, Derby Road. I am in favor of affordable housing. I want to say that upfront. However, I have concerns with the offsets specifically. My biggest concern is the reduction in lot size. It is 50% of a reduction. To me, that's too much. I believe that that should be modified. Everybody knows Revere is congested as it is, and a 50% reduction in lot size is just too dramatic. The other concern, of course, I have is parking. A lot of the streets don't even have sidewalks anymore because there's just nowhere for the cars to go, and they're all over the sidewalk. So there's nowhere to even walk. The next big concern I have is the payment that can be made to the Revere Housing Trust Fund in lieu of creating any affordable housing units. So if a developer was going to make this payment, they don't, they can take advantage of all these offsets but not create any affordable housing units. So I just want everyone to look at this carefully to make sure that it is going to accomplish the intent. So if it is to accomplish more affordable housing, that's great. I don't want it to be instead benefiting the builders more than it's actually creating affordable housing and helping the citizens of Revere. So I think those offsets really need to be looked at carefully and modified.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Okay, hearing, before we close that side, I think there are some residents...
There were just a few other proponents that submitted a letter to the record. Claudia Sen, 11 Satchin Street, Fatu Dramay, 30 Park Ave. Julie Velada, 86 Gajav. Leila Petri, 525 Beach Street. Ralph DeChico, 49 Washington Street. Riviera Cares, 300 Ocean Avenue. Rosemarie D'Amello, 367 Proctor Avenue. All reported as proponents.
Thank you. All right. If there are no other proponents, we're going to close that side of the hearing.
Hi, my name is Leila Petri. I'm living on 525 Beach Street. And I'm talking as a Revere resident and a part of, a member of the Revere Housing Coalition. And inclusionary zoning policies may be reduce price in the cost market and promote housing affordability. in the cost market and promote housing affordability. Units produced through inclusionary zoning policies may be affordable when originally produced, but will become less affordable when they pass over time. Some cities like Salon, Boston, San Francisco, they have trust funds that they share with another equity, how ownership strategies. Communities can ensure that affordable units produced through the inclusionary zoning stay affordable over time. That's what we try to do with inclusionary zoning, not just for a just short period of time, it's just for the all the time in Revere. That's it.
Thank you. If there—we're going to close that side. Are you a proponent or a proponent?
I'm a proponent.
Okay.
My name's Chris Alba, 185 Walnut Ave, Revere. I just want to say, I live in the city, and I also do this work with the housing and stuff with people my whole life. We really need to keep an eye on the loopholes in it because every year we gain maybe 10% of public housing in affordable housing, but every year we lose about 23% of that housing because there's creative ways where people find to get—to get out of that, like in lieu of payments and stuff like that. So every year in this state, we're losing more housing than we gain. We need to get as much as we can more of housing. We need this, but we need more than this, too. This isn't—if you look at it, it's not enough. There's a lot—people that are making a lot less than what you're talking about up there that are losing their housing—homes every day. Don't look at this as like, "All right, we did this, we're done." We need to do a lot more than this. I am looking for an apartment outside of the city, as a matter of fact, outside the state because I can't afford to live in the city anymore. I lived here my whole life. And there's—if we don't do something quick, and this is—a Band-Aid. This is going to help a few people stay here, but there's a lot of us that have to leave and can't even afford what they're talking about for that price range. And we're losing pocket spaces. A lot of us have to drive Uber and DoorDash and all that stuff just to eat at night because our entire paychecks are going towards our rents.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
If I may, I know there's a lot of folks out here that haven't spoken, that have come in favor, and I'd like to maybe even get a raise of hands so we'll have an idea of how many people are actually here in favor of this.
Okay.
So if—
If we can have a raise of hands of who is in favor of— Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. If there are no other proponents, we're going to close that side, and we're going to— Any opponents?
Good evening again. This is Attorney Jerry D'Ambrosio, 14 Proctor Avenue in Revere. I'm here on a pro se basis for myself. I own property in the city, I have family in the city. I do quite a bit of permitting work in the city, and I'd like to start my comments really by thanking the coalition folks because this is a really, really important issue. I suggest to the City Council that it's probably the most important vote you'll take this year because it will change our community, depending on how you vote. And so while I'm up here in opposition, I do want to thank you for all your work because it's important to note that we start from the same point.
Counselor, can you address the chair, please?
Sure. Rents are much, much too expensive. They're much too expensive in Revere. They're much too expensive in Boston. They're much too expensive in Philadelphia. They're much too expensive in Miami. They're much too expensive in Dallas. They're much too expensive in San Francisco. They're much too expensive—in Michigan. They're too expensive anywhere in the United States. That is the reality that we're talking about. Rents are too expensive. So that being said, the question is, how do we fix that problem? Ms. Smith got up here, and she alluded to the fact that—
Counselor. Counselor, I know yours—address the chair. Look at—not—the audience. I want to see your face.
It's not the jury pool.
I don't want to insult anyone by turning my back.
All right. He thinks he's speaking—
I want to see your face.
Absolutely.
Okay.
My point is this, though. How do we—how do we fix the problem? How do you fix the problem? Ms. Smith has gotten up here. She's told you that this is no silver bullet. Or was that the mayor who said? No silver bullet. With all due respect, it's not even a small fire— it's not even a small firecracker, okay? This isn't even a small firecracker. Suggesting that a 15% affordability rate is going to fix this problem is just ignoring the problem, with all due respect. So the question is, what—why? Why do we have this problem? And I think any legitimate intellectual endeavor will tell you it's because our zoning laws in this state are overly restrictive. We have NIMBYism everywhere. While everybody shows up here and says, "I'm in favor of 15% because it's in the city next door to me," if the project is being proposed next to them, they're the first ones to oppose it. That is the political honesty of this problem. That is why we are in the mess we are today, not because of builders. Builders want to add to our stock of housing. They don't want to detract to it. And it's simple, supply and demand. The more housing that you add, the lower your rents are going to be. The more restrictive we are with our zoning laws, the more—the fewer units will be built, and the higher the rents. That is the political truth here that no one wants to seem to address. Look at the science. Ms. Smith got up here—Ms. Smith got up here and talked about finding that threshold of where the numbers will be too high, and they'll actually prevent development. And that is why this is the most important vote you'll take this year. If you enact—if you enact an ordinance that is too high, you will actually be doing just the opposite. You will be causing fewer units to be built. Now, you may be saying, "Well, how do you know this?" Well, we've talked about some loose science, but let's talk about one in specific. There was a study done out in San Jose, California. We see California on TV all the time. It's one of the most congested states in the country. San Jose is one of the most congested metropolitan areas in California. In 2010, they passed an ordinance that was similar to this in that it was, I believe, 15% on 20 units or more, okay? Ours is 12% at 10 units or more. So in some ways—
Six.
Six or more. So in some way—absolutely right, I apologize. In some way, our zoning ordinance here is more aggressive than the one that was passed in San Jose. Well, they did a study on what the result was for affordable housing in San Jose. So this was passed in 2010. And what they did is they looked at all the housing stocks in San Jose for the seven years before 2010. They found that there were 28,000 homes built. 28,000 for that seven years going up to 2010. None were affordable, but there were 28,000 fair market rate units. They passed it in 2010. Well, guess what? Between 2010 and 2017, the number dropped from 28,000 to 11,000. Seventeen thousand fewer units were built.
Counselor.
That being said—
Counselor, I'm going to end this.
No, no, but this is the issue, though.
Yes.
This is the issue. What happened in San Jose is that they got, as a result of that, an extra 800 affordable units, which, by the way, is not something to laugh at.
Okay.
Right? They got an extra 800 affordable housing units, but they lost about 17,000 market rate units. So that's what you're weighing here. And I'm not casting judgment. I'm truly not because this is a political decision that you all have to make. But I like to be honest about these things. And we have to be honest about the numbers because the reality is, the more aggressive our ordinance is, at some point, it's going to cause fewer units to be built. It's—it's not—it—how do I know this? Because there's case study after case study in the United States. That's how I know this. So at what point does the affordable housing units that we create actually deter the market rates? Counsel, I appreciate it, but we've had about 15 people speak in favor.
I know. I know, and I'm giving you that latitude, and I understand that.
That being said, if that's a political decision that we want to weigh, you know, the few affordable housing units, if that's more of a political value than the hundreds, maybe thousands, of market rate units, well, then that's fine. You're making that political units. But that's—let's be clear about it. That's not creating more affordable housing. It's just the opposite. It's creating 15% more affordable. It's creating 85% more unaffordable because at that point, those fees have to be made up by someone else. That is simple supply and demand economics. That's at the micro level. At the micro level, you know, I'd like to point out that this is a difficult time to be considering a proposal like this. We are heading into a recession. There's absolutely no doubt about that. Interest rates are in the 6%. We're going into the 7% very soon. We have gas prices that are skyrocketing. We have wood prices that are skyrocketing. We have steel prices that are skyrocketing. We have an economy that in six months will be in pretty poor shape. And what I'm suggesting is that if—if we don't get this right, if this ordinance is too high, we're going to kill the new development of units in the city. We're not going to encourage them. We're going to kill them. And that's, again, going to simply drive up prices. Another point that I just wanted to raise real quickly is that many of the large-scale lots in the cities have already been built on. If you look at Revere Beach, if you look at many of the other parcels throughout the city, many of these large parcels that can house 100 units, 200 units or more have already been built up, and they've been that over the last 15 years. That being said, I worry about that because that means that it'll—it'll place the burden on this on the smaller builder, the builder that's building six units, seven units, eight units, 10 units. And I'm telling you, they don't have the market—the markup that you think they have. You start to put the onus on those small-time builders, they're just going to stop building. And one final point. One final point.
You're going to be at the zoning. If this is going—this is going to zoning.
But I do want to—I do want to finish with one point. I do want to—I think these people have done a wonderful job. I think—I think this is an important issue. It really is. But it is a weighing, right? It is a weighing.
That's why it's going to go to zoning. It's going to end up at zoning. There's going to be further discussion on it.
Mr. President, before you shut this down—
Thank you.
So one of the things that Counselor D'Ambrosio brought up is the studies. Anybody who studies urban policy can look at this information. It's pretty straightforward. Clearly, those people that build between six and 12 units are going to have a hard time capturing the cost between the attainment of property and the development. One of the things that we can do in this community, and you spoke about it, Counselor D'Ambrosio, is about the acquirement of land. There's only one or two places in the city that actually has land that's—that's possible for the use of affordable housing, and that's the municipal parking lot. There's approximately 2.5 acres there. The city of Revere, in 1990 up until 2000, utilized the process of attaining private property and public property down at Waterfront Square, and they've built thousands of units down there. There is a possibility that if the city thinks creatively and outside of the box, uses that municipal parking lot of over 80,000 square feet to build a public-private partnership where you can actually amortize the cost of taking the property and building affordable housing, you could probably put 100 to 200 properties there. And more importantly, you could control the cost of the acquirement of the property, which in the city of Revere, one acre is approximately $4 million. That, for a developer that stands right there, is something that we could work with. We could put many people on that property, but that takes a lot of effort from us, from the mayor, and from the developers. Just a thought. Thank you.
Any other opponents?
Jamie Russo, 1040 North Shore Road in Revere. Counselor D'Ambrosio is a very tough act to follow, so I'm going to be very brief. So I am one of the mourners and groaners that the mayor mentioned about, you know, and I know he means it with all due respect. Jerry D'Ambrosio is absolutely correct. There are a lot of other factors that are going along here that are not represented in sort of what the studies say. I am a believer in affordable housing, although I'm not an affordable builder. There is a need for it, and I think the community actually does need it. But to shoulder this burden on what I would call the small developer, it's—Jerry D'Ambrosio is right. We are not going to be able to build. I mean, I'm the only builder, I think, in here, right? I mean, does anyone know what a yard of concrete costs today? Nobody? I'd rather not answer that question. A lot, a lot.
A lot more than that.
It's just—it's just one of those things where, again, I do see the need, and I think that the city is thirsty for it. But again, I think—I think Counselor D'Ambrosio is right. I think we're going to sort of regress, and the intended purpose of this ordinance, I think, is—is not going to be met. I can tell you, I can only speak for myself. You know, a lot of these sort of ordinances that are great, they sound good, you know, you come up here, we hold a sign. It's needed. However, it's not as easily attainable. So that being said, I would say, as it's presently written, I could not support it at all. I think, again, not to sort of repeat everything that Attorney D'Ambrosio said, the concessions that the city would be making to allow for density and parking requirements, that's the way to go, and let developers develop. Every study in the world shows more stock is the answer to this question. And Jerry's right on another thing. This isn't a Revere problem. This is a national problem. So I do believe and agree we need a solution. I don't know that this is it because to build six units and to deem one affordable, there's not going to be many people building six units, and I can tell you that from experience.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Those opposed?
Push the button. Nick Dayr, 1023 Went Up Ave. I'm up here today to caution against inclusionary housing. Just so you know, I'm not—I never did a ground-up construction. I'm not up here for my own agenda. I'm up here for the consumer. I've been in real estate 14 years now. I've watched the housing crisis only get worse and worse. And as the two people prior to me pointed out, it has to do with inventory. Stamping a unit affordable does not add to inventory. I am a landlord, and I know that tenants have zero leverage. That's because there's no options for them. What we need to look at is adding more stock through zoning. I think it's crazy that we are working off much of our zoning map, still dates back to 1920, and we have RB districts just about a budding T-stations. RB means you can only put one to two units on that on that lot of land. And that is not utilizing public transportation. That is not increasing stock, and that is going to just delay this problem forever. Now, also, not only we not adding stock, we're going to cause market condos, market apartments, to rise. I really respect Mrs. Smith's math. I'm sure they're better than mine. So I'm going to go that it may only be a 1% difference return for the developer, but the developer still has their margins. They're not just going to take less. They're going to keep it the same. They're going to pass that cost onto the market rate condos. So as I mentioned, I'm in real estate. I'm watching buyers lose affordability by the week with rising rates. Now, you want to take the 88% of stock and have them offset the cost of affordable units, and it's only going to make that skyrocket even further, and it's only going to hurt affordability in the city. So honestly, I think it's a great, great, great idea, and I hate voting against or opposing it, or opposing it, but I think the solution is looking at density and looking at increasing public transportation. And I love that you guys brought up the ordinance of the AUDs. I think that's awesome. AUDs? I think that's awesome. I think now, and I love that the majority of you put pressure on MBTA to increase the, the, the train. That's, that's where we need to focus the energy and the time, and then as the development comes through, maybe we can divert some of that tax revenues towards vouchers and help those people in need, because there's a ton of people in need, and they need it. But stamping something affordable isn't going to solve the problem.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other opponents? Those opposed? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, this is going to get referred to zoning.
Calendar item number six, hearing called is ordered on an ordinance amending the departmental revolving funds table.
Did you want to speak? No one wants to hear about the revolving funds? Counsel. I'm a little offended here. All right. All right. Mr. Biscay, name and address for the record. Good evening. Richard Biscay, 281 Broadway, CFO. I am here before you to amend the departmental revolving funds. We are looking to add three revolving funds. Thank you. We're just, we're looking to add three revolving funds to our departmental revolving funds. One is the Garfield Pool that the Recreation Department has just recently taken over operation from. We're proposing that the revenues collected from that pool be used for the program and activity costs of that. We are also looking to create a revolving fund for electric vehicle charging stations whereby we may look to charge for the use of those electric charging stations to pay for the maintenance and potentially add in more of those to our stock. And finally, the last one is a trash barrel revolving fund that will allow us to charge for a recycled barrel or a extra trash barrel and use those funds to replenish the stock of inventory. So, all the other revolving funds have been in place and ordained by the council here. We're just looking to add three more to our list of them to help control the, the revenue and expenses of those particular operations. So, happy to answer any questions with regard to those three new revolving funds.
I'm sorry. Any other proponents? This is still a public hearing. Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side. Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side. Councillors, any councillors wishing to speak? No? Roll. This is going to be, it's an ordinance. This is going to be referred to Ways and Means.
Next up is the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee.
Mr. President, if I may, could I ask the suspension of rules to take up item number 13?
Sure. Let's, we'll take up item number 13.
Calendar item number 13, communication from the city auditor relative to an appropriation from the Community Improvement Trust Fund for Costa Park.
Good evening. Richard Biscay, 281 Broadway, CFO. We are in the process of rebuilding Costa Park. We do have a grant from Kaboom, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with. They supply us the equipment and some labor, and the appropriation request is for those incidental costs that go along with the rebuild of this park, and I'm here to speak in favor of it. And L. Baker from the Planning Department is also here to give you a little more information, if you like it. Thank you.
If there are any, any questions, would you like to come up and speak? Sure.
L. Baker, Planning Department, Open Space Environmental Planner, 281 Broadway. Kaboom grant. We've done a few Kaboom builds in the city. It's a community-style park build. We're looking to schedule the build tentatively for August 10th, 11th, and 12th. We are required to have a match for the equipment and the installation, so the amount that were chose requested will cover the incidental costs in order to match that grant and to rehabilitate that site. We also have a second grant that will take care of the board and place rubber. If anyone has any questions.
Any questions from the council?
I know it's been a long night.
Hearing and seeing none, let's take a roll call.
Shall the city council approve a transfer in the amounts of $80,000 from the Community Improvement Trust Fund to the Costa Park Grant Match? Councillor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselfski?
Absolutely.
Yes, councillor Rizzo is absent, councillor Rotundo? Yes, councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and councillor President Piscanti?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved.
Okay, back to the regular order of business. I believe we're on the.
On the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee Report.
Thank you. Today, we had, at the legislative subcommittee meeting, we had three items that were on the agenda. The first, first motion, communication was relative to the Act of Establishing a New Election System for the School Committee for the City of Revere. This was voted out favorably to the city council. So, we'll do a, a roll call on that.
Shall the city council approve an act establishing a new election system for the school committee of the city of Revere? Councillor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselfski?
No.
No, councillor Rizzo is absent, councillor Rotundo?
No.
No, councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and councillor President Piscanti?
Yes.
Yes, the special act has been approved?
The other two items, motion presented to draft an ordinance that will deduct a percentage of the city council's salary when absent from a regular meeting or subcommittee meeting has been placed on file. And then the last motion was councillor Rizzo's motion that was, has been left in committee since he is not present today. That concludes the subcommittee report.
Next up is the Appointments Subcommittee Report.
Councillor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had two items on the agenda this evening. Unfortunately, neither candidate showed up to the meeting, so we did table them until the next Appointments Subcommittee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 12, communication from the city clerk requesting a confirmatory vote of the fiscal year 2023 budget appropriation.
Yes. Madam Clerk, if you can read the communication into the record.
Dear city councillors, upon thorough review of the meeting minutes of June 16th, 2022, of the city council meeting, a reduction of the solicitor's office non-payroll budget in the amount of $50,000 was not approved. This reduction was inadvertently included in the total fiscal year 2023 budget appropriation vote in which the city council adopted an amount of $240,469,324. It should be noted that the city council correctly approved the solicitor's office non-payroll budget in the amount of $298,500 as presented by the mayor after the $50,000 reduction request failed. To correct the $50,000 discrepancy, I request that the city council take a confirmatory vote of the total fiscal year 2023 budget appropriation in the amount of $240,519,324. The reductions approved by the city council totaled $171,489.
If there are no questions, we'll take a roll call.
That the city council hereby adopts and approves the budget for fiscal year 2023, the sum of $240,519,324, which sum shall be appropriated and raised by taxation and other sources as listed in the appropriation order. Councillor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rizzo is absent, councillor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Silvestri is absent, and councillor President Piscanti?
Yes.
Yes, the budget appropriation order has been approved. Next up is motions. Calendar item number 14, motion presented by councillor Rotundo that the mayor look into the feasibility of providing a dedicated Zoom coordinator for all public meetings and engagements as deemed necessary by the mayor, his deskmat and the Revere City Council. The purpose of this position would be to provide Zoom for every public meeting, allowing city officials and residents to participate in, in the event they have COVID.
Councillor Rotundo?
We can vote it up tonight. I prefer to vote it up.
Huh? You prefer to vote it?
Yep.
Okay. Roll call?
Roll call on councillor Rotundo's motion. Councillor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Keith?
No.
No, councillor McKenna?
No.
No, councillor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselfski?
No.
No, councillor Rizzo is absent, councillor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Silvestri is absent, and councillor President Piscanti?
No.
No, the motion fails? Calendar item number 15, motion presented by councillor Morbido that the mayor request the police department to establish a tip line before the Fourth of July to anonymously report illegal fireworks and include the tip number in a reverse 3-1-1 call on the city website and on social media.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number 16, motion presented by councillors Cogliandro and Keith that the mayor request the traffic commission to establish a crosswalk at 144 Broadway.
Councillor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you councillor Keith for joining me on this, you know, there's a karate school there that has a lot of children that cross the street with their families throughout every day, and I just feel it would be a lot safer for a crosswalk to be present in that area. Thank you.
Councillor Keith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I support councillor Cogliandro as well as, this is on, on a major, major road, Broadway. I know there are a couple of crosswalks north and south of this, but this would, would definitely help on that, that three-way, I guess, intersection. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by councillor McKenna that the mayor request the city solicitor in conjunction with the chief of infrastructure to craft an ordinance requiring all utility and construction companies to remove all equipment, vehicles, cones, signs, et cetera, from city property when not returning to a job site within one week. Construction debris is left at sites throughout the city, ruining the aesthetics of our neighborhoods.
Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, there's a lot of work being done across the city, and what's happening is, especially in front of my house, they're putting manholes, and they have left cones and signs, and they haven't returned for three weeks. What's happening around the city, we're becoming a cone and cot city. That's what we're doing. We have to hold these construction and utility companies accountable, so I'm asking for an ordinance to do this. Aesthetically, they are ruining, ruining the sites of our city. You won't see this in Marblehead, you don't see this in Swampscott, and they take spray paint and they write stories on the sidewalks, and I know it dissipates over time, but you can come in front of my house and they have a story in front of my house. So, I'm just asking, let's clean up the city. We're becoming a cone and cot city. Let's clean up the city and hold these companies accountable. Thank you.
Councillor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I just want to say that I wholeheartedly agree with this. If you're driving into Ward Three from Ward Six, currently there is a giant truck with cones around it forcing traffic to go into the oncoming lane, so we need, we absolutely need to clean up our city of all these construction vehicles. Thank you.
Councillor Novoselfski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councillor McKenna, thank you very much. Great idea. Last, last year and the year before, National Grid for seven months, had their equipment, not only supplies, tubing, but their construction equipment, their backhoes, their big trucks, parked in front of people's homes. Totally unacceptable. I fought with them for all that period of time. Unfortunately, they did not comply, and they were very rude to say, to say the least. So I agree with this, and thank you, and we'll support this when it comes out.
Councillor Keith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I too applaud councillor McKenna in, just in reference to the markings on the streets. I recognize DigSafe and the certain pieces that need to be marked on the sidewalks and streets, but they're supposed to be using a paint that comes up within a few months. You go, you go by a lot of the newer streets and sidewalks, and they're, they're, they're there for two years plus. I've had residents say, hey, can you get this removed? It's un aesthetically pleasing, it's not fair to people that own homes and want to beautify their properties. The paint they're using should come up within a very short period of time, or they're going to have to come back and take it up with power washes and whatnot. So, I think that our city's construction oversight manager should, should really take, take, take notice on this. Thank you.
If there's no, no other questions and no objections, I'd like to vote this out. All in favor, all opposed, so ordered?
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by councillor Keith that the mayor request, be requested to submit a request to the city council for an appropriation from the Community Improvement Trust Fund for the purpose of cleaning up and making improvements to city-owned parcels located on Burbank Street, along the sidewalk, and at the intersection of Dale Street and Bain Street.
Councillor Keith?
Thank you. Real brief, we have Burbank Street on the left side, I think everyone knows. There's a city-owned parcel that's in between a few residents that I have to request every year to get it cleaned. The neighbors there do get upset because they end up cleaning it, and on, on the spring cleanup, they did a really nice job. I want to reward them. We could permanently make that area, low maintenance cleanup that, you know, put some mulching or some stone that doesn't require a city employee to go every two or three months to, to knock weeds down. Make it a little bit more pleasing for the neighbors, maybe a space that they can utilize. I'm not looking for large gatherings, and no one is, because it's, there's a residential area, but potentially an area they can take their dog or, or even just sit and, and, and chat. But we, we should put some Community Improvement Trust money that we have from different projects throughout the area to clean up that area, as well as the, I call it the delta, in between Bain Street and Dale Street. It's a, it's a large, open, kind of grassy area with a tree, very nice tree, that just constantly gets overgrown, the sidewalk, you know, the, the ledging on the sidewalk. This is another area, you can put a small park bench in the area for the neighbors to enjoy, sit down, walk their dog to, or just, just be able to relax and enjoy a slight, kind of a pocket park, but something that we can do more with in that small area, and again, using the funds that we're getting from these projects throughout the city. Thank you.
All in favor? All, all opposed? So ordered?
Late motion presented by councillor Rotundo that the mayor investigate the feasibility of taking the Carabeta properties by eminent domain for the purpose of converting to affordable housing. The properties have been allegedly blighted both now and in the past.
Councillor Rotundo speaks for itself.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I may.
Councillor Novoselfski?
This is a great motion, believe it or not. Carabeta properties are the worst landlords in the city of Revere. They're total irresponsible. They just had a fire at 370 Ocean Ave, and they have not done a thing to help the people. Zero. And they should be ashamed of themselves. And I think these would be great properties that we could use for affordable housing, and they're a disgrace. Let me say that. Thank you. Thank you, councillor.
Councillor Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I too commend councillor Rotundo for, for putting this motion in. They are not, they're not kept at, at all. When the city does ask for them to step up and take care of issues, they completely refuse. They, they're, they don't put their elevators into standards, and, and they're willing to pay fine after fine after fine instead of making their property up, upkept and, and to the standard that the residents in their properties deserve. And I believe that that is an answer to, to one of the issues that we were just facing with affordable, with affordable housing. Making one or two affordable is, is not going to help the people that are in their homes now struggling to stay here in Revere, but making a unit or a structure like that affordable is, is an idea, and I commend the councillor for doing so. Thank you.
Councillor Rotundo, do you want to?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I wanted to dispatch with this quickly, but the relevance here is that any other property within the city that has had so many faults, from the fire to the elevators to other compliance issues, would have been shut down. And I don't know if it's 40 hour, what particular chapter in the code it is, and we would have done a taking at this point. They are, as councillor Novoselfski said, probably the worst purveyors within this community. Thank you.
Well, if there are no questions, no other comments, I, I couldn't agree more with that. Everybody I speak to regarding that property, those properties, say not nice things about the landlords.